603. Please stand for questions.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the very majesty of our emperor.
Councilmember Gruber.
Present.
Councilmember Weiss.
Here.
Councilmember Janis Kavitch. Councilmember Cook.
Here.
Councilmember Hadfield.
Here.
Councilmember Missel.
Here.
Councilmember Adams.
Mayor House.
Here.
Is there any agenda updates? Let's move on to consent agenda. It's checks number sixteen, two fifty-two, sixteen, two sixty-nine, and EFTs as follows.
Can we excuse the absences? Move the DEXs.
All favors say aye.
Aye.
I agree both.
Absences are excused. So checks sixteen, two fifty-two to sixteen, two sixty-nine, EFTs. Council paid an amount of fifty-three thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty-one cents. Payroll on the June fifth, twenty nineteen, an amount of twenty-four thousand, one hundred and eighty-three dollars and ninety cents. And we're in place of the year in May twenty.
I'll move the options to the second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All favors and nights consent agenda. Say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Same agenda updates. And now we've got the citizens' comments on non-agenda items.
Honorable members, city councilmembers. I'm Jerry Porter, I live at four hundred West Utah in Roslyn. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Roslyn Downtown Association. Updates are, we've finally got the last money and one of the last skaters of working through the NWIC project. Final phase. Northeast group is getting finished seismic fittings to the parapets, historical shutters, which by the way were installed during the strike way back when. And replacement of the storefront windows, you may have been noticing. The commonplace stories are almost all finished. The carriage meets, NWIC fire, Roslyn boarding house, and a few of the mortuary stories are soon to go up. So you'll stop by and see a little of our history. We have a CW intern that's been there with us all of this quarter. Katrina is developing internship program for CW in years to come to work with the RDA. So that's a great thing. We have been having tenant trainings for the AED and fire drill. And we received five thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars where Satterburg Foundation and Harbor One Commons. That is for the creative center. We are behind, we wanted to open by Memorial Day, but we found that there was insufficient electric. So they're having to put in a new transformer. The windows, the wood windows have now replaced the old spacetakers, I guess you would call them. And we're working on the outdoor space with the gazebo and things while waiting for the electric to be updated. Thank you.
Are you hoping to see a grand opening here, community center or?
Well, we're hoping again. They say six to eight weeks for the transformers, but maybe contingencies that happen throughout the community that could be sooner. Soon as that happens, we will.
So when do you hope to have the NWI building a hundred percent? I know it's a hard question to ask.
Well, it is kind of, but we're hoping by end of summer.
End of summer, awesome.
Is that a new roof?
It's a miracle you pulled it off.
I tell ya.
Your whole team.
Those guys are great.
Cool.
Thank you.
Any other citizen comments on non-agenda items? Okay, then let's move on to, oh, I guess we can't. Pitch is not here. So we will get off the TNC presentation and then we will just move on to the public hearing. For comprehensive planning. We'll open the public hearing. Any public want to discuss the comprehensive planning? Michelle, help me here. This is basically the final draft?
So yeah, so it'll come, they'll be, the planning commission will have another public hearing on the twentieth.
That's true.
Yep, and then you guys will have another public hearing on the twenty-fifth and then adopt if the code of that. And then Christina has still some minor revisions that were suggested during the joint meeting with the planning commission and the council. And then anything that we get here would also be incorporated into that final draft. And the draft is on, Brandy printed some, you guys, I don't know if you have them in your packets, but it's up here. To get to the draft, because it's a huge document. So instead of just continuing to print it out, the most up-to-date draft is, you can get through that link.
So as changes are made, the link will be updated?
Mm-hmm.
Twenty-five from the night or anything next week could be updated?
Uh, no, not necessarily, because it'll probably be one bulk update. So but definitely before the twenty-fifth, all of those would be incorporated.
Do you gentlemen have a statement?
Us name and address. Hi, my name is Tom Yuren. And my wife Sharon and I live at one oh three Morgue East Street up in Riverside, up in the park there. And I'm testifying to the complaint, but not directly to any specific verbiage in the complaint. I, we had submitted a complaint amendment earlier this year, three months or so ago. And I just wanted to take the opportunity to kind of explain to you what our supplemental was about. And I've been talking to Michelle as we've moved along, and I understand there's some process. There's a variety of different processes that could address our issue. But I just wanted to explain to you and see if you have any questions, so you can understand why we made this request. So we live in the old halfway house, which is a long house up at the property hill above East Street. And we have about one point six acres or so. And the back half of our property is currently zoned urban forest overlay. So it's currently residential with this urban forest overlay, which, as I understand it, is a means to preserve the trees that are on the hillside. You know, the existing trees, which is perfectly fine by us. But we did a survey about a year ago in preparation for taking out some outfitting that was in, building a new garage. And that survey revealed that the property boundaries up there were not exactly in keeping with what people thought they were. And so, in essence, and you can have a copy of our supplemental if you want to get all the details, but to be quick about it. In essence, what happened was the urban forest overlay actually bisects our house. Right? It was meant to apply to the hillside above our house where all the trees are. But because of the way the property boundaries were and the fact that the surveys don't match occupation as well as they should, it actually is lower and the urban forest overlay applies to half of our house and some of the outbuildings. And so our request, because the urban forest overlay has a number of requirements to, you know, preserve trees and manage resources, which once again I'm not against. It actually applies to parts of our property that were, you know, always developed and never intended to be preserved as trees. So our original request was to move that urban forest overlay up to where it matched the existing tree line, which is there forever, and not apply to the lower areas, which have been developed for, you know, forever essentially. And I just, I know that there's a variety of different processes, like, you know, except for Michelle. But I just want to make sure that on the record, that our request is heard and ruled on so that we can, you know, use our historically residential part of our properties the way residential properties are meant to be. And that the urban forest overlay or any changes to it apply to the trees on the hillside above, which were not the ones that changed. So, once again, there's a supplemental. I submitted a copy of the survey, which shows, you know, where all the buildings, where the trees are. And, you know, just an explanation of what's going on, if you have any questions, I may have to answer it. But I would, I would, we're really anxious to have this solved so that we can actually use the developed portions of our property the way we've calculated always. It's just, you know, it's an old city and the surveys aren't, it was an accident. And surveys reveal that the boundaries weren't the way I think people intended to be, so we'd like to have it corrected.
And you understand the steps that are involved in that change?
Well, not one hundred percent, but I understand that Michelle and the city is in favor of making changes. But, you know, all of the exact steps, I think, are going to be revealed as part of this whole complaint update process. So.
Oh, so it doesn't necessarily have to be part of the complaint proposal?
So yeah, so he presented a, an amendment proposal for the comp plan, and that was analyzed by Burke for, so there's an actual analysis. So basically, the way the analysis came out is that the city was going to try to address that through our development regulations by either changing the minimum lot sizes within the urban forest overlay or removing the urban forest overlay from the zoning classification or, I'm not sure. There's several options within that that have to still be discussed. If only it was that easy.
So, and that's the issue, there is some complexity to it. And I just want to make sure that when we have the chance to go onto the record, that we don't miss an opportunity legally. You know, as Michelle says, it's probably going to be addressed when type of eighteen was looked at. But if for some reason it had to be looked at down, I want to make sure that we don't miss our opportunity to make sure that there's provisions in the complaint that address this very thing.
Does this look like other houses?
Yes.
Primaries yours? Okay, defects neighbors as well?
Well, I wouldn't, I don't, I mean, there's only just a few parcels. You know the exact number off the top of your head, thirteen?
Thirteen, yeah.
So there's thirteen parcels in the Roslyn Urban Forest Overlay. And there's a minimum lot size on those of twenty acres. So it creates a little bit of a problem since there's not a single lot, they're all non-conforming lots, minimum of twenty acres. So not exactly the same scenario as in this case, but similar issues.
So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Do you currently have plans around your garage?
Yes.
Have those been submitted yet?
Yes. And I actually have pulled it together. But, but there are additional restrictions because the urban forest overlay, the garage would be permitted, but there's a number of other things that will need to be addressed.
Very good, what it covers is moving the people, it looks like your adjacent neighbor is about the same line with your house is, and I assume that may include the other one also.
Probably.
The parcel.
I've looked at that piece of property. There's definitely trees sitting in the back, I mean, his life saves are exaggerated, it's a pretty defiant line where it can be.
But it sounds like we can't, it's not, we can't just change that one boundary. So we have to see if we change the lines of the overlay, what they did in the other properties.
Yeah, so the discussion is, what is the intent of the overlay and is the overlay actually achieving that intent? So that's the discussion that kind of has to be had of, and then how we would address it from there. So there's been discussion about removing it and creating a buffer from the Roslyn Urban Forest, which would probably be more in line with, with what you're talking about, a more fluid boundary. But again, those are all discussions that still have to be had.
And are we on a timeline for that?
Well.
Because this, I mean, this is coming up in comp plan's hearing, but.
Yeah, there's not, there's not a timeline for it, it is, it is part of the comp plan. But the way that it's been addressed for right now within the comp plan is that it'll be addressed during or through the development regulations. So we've blanketed the comp plan to incorporate it either way, I guess, however we move forward with it.
Oh, okay.
Then we just have to talk the regulation. But it's in the comp plan.
Yeah, with the development regulations.
It's coming to explain it.
Yeah. Thanks for bringing it, right?
Thank you.
Hey, you bet.
Thank you.
Public hearing, comprehensive planning from us. I don't know if the planning historic commission, public, or the question or.
What's that a boast? I think we've made significant comments about the comp plan and feel pretty secure about that, so.
Yeah, but they'll have another hearing on the twentieth as well.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, is there any other? Can I close with open public hearing? Can I close the open public hearing? Thank you. Next, the first reading for the architectural design review processing procedures. We talked about that last week.
And then I added those changes you wanted.
My intent for staffs and technical my claims to try to expedite the process so that it's still public. And you guys have to wait for meetings to actually get these things addressed.
Did you have a little discussion on this last council meeting? And I think there's a question on, does it feel that the planning commission was left out if it was passed on that way? But as I write back through this, that they are allowed to go back individually or within pairs of two, however they need to go back through on some of those. It reassures to go back, they're not going to get overlooked, it's just to expedite the procedure. And to me, it makes common sense, perfectly good sense, that some of them are, can just go through and some of them need to be re-reviewed in a timely fashion.
Sorry to interrupt, just so we don't get out of order though. I want to, it's a.
Yes, it's a discussion.
It's just a discussion, sorry, I didn't read on. Sorry to interrupt you.
Jeanne Brodin, real one more please, sweet. I'm the historic commission's chair. And Michelle brought this up to me some time ago, and we did talk about it in the commission. And I must say, at first, it sounded like a pretty good idea as far as design goes. But as we have, some of us have talked about it and considered it, I see some issues with it. And basically, the commission would like to compromise to approve this. We are actually a quasi judicial organization. So to have one or two of us or two or three approve something, while it sounds good, it's actually not technically legal because we have to vote on it, and we are subject to laws around that. So that, I mean, I had to do some research to think about it. And I also think, I mean, Michelle and I have talked a little bit about what, you know, how do you use time and her time and our time. We know there's a lot of code revisions that need to be done. And I think the feeling is if we aren't doing this design review, we have more time to do code revisions. And so what we are willing to do is certainly work, you know, in subcommittees of that. Like we have just worked today for two hours on subdivisions. I just think this is an important part of what we do. I think it's actually the heart of what we do. We can write code, and that's great, but if we aren't reviewing different properties that come through, I think the heart of what we do is kind of wrong.
You don't think that you could accomplish the same thing you're speaking of in a subcommittee?
No.
You do with codes?
No. Well, I think what happens is.
Designer review is more, is more important?
I think they're equally important, but I think if you take one away, then the other one is not, we're just way out of balance with it.
Because designer review is reviewing of the design to verify that it doesn't bother.
Exactly. And what we found, especially, like, the last meeting is a good example, because we, as, basically as a courtesy, we now offer a pre-design review. Right? So people who come and not pay a fee and have their design review. I mean, five years ago, when I was first became chair, we weren't allowed to do that. People had to come before us, pay the fee. If their design was turned down, they'd come back again and pay the fee. So with the pre-design review, as a courtesy, they can, you know, get some feedback and fix it.
Can they do the pre-design review in front of me?
Right. But what happens. So what happens is, for example, the last meeting, there were two applications and a bit of pre-design review. We had given some careful direction. They did not follow that direction. They, the thing they brought before us violated the codes. But it took some careful looking at that. And so my belief is we need all the commissioners to look at that. I'm afraid we aren't, we're just not in sync with other certified local developers in the state. That bothers you too. I just think it's significant. Other commissioners may have something to say as well.
Yeah.
Kathy Cook, four oh two East Idaho. I, one real flaw I see in this design is that it, it pretty much relies a lot on the mayor or his designate, which would be the city planner.
Or you.
Well, yeah, but we.
She can't. Yeah. Generally, she can't by herself.
Not by myself, yeah.
Yeah, she can.
It does, it does rely on the city planner.
If the planner could do it by herself, why wouldn't the commissioner?
Yeah, they can. As long as we adopt the policy, that's what the attorney has told us. She can.
I don't, I don't.
Yeah, if that's the case, I'm really opposed to it, because I don't think that, that one commissioner should have that, that amount of, you know, responsibility. But I guess my, my, the point I was going to make is that this relies to a large degree on us having Michelle, who's, you know, highly competent, really engaged, and, you know, that's great. But if further down the road you don't have Michelle, then, then who's to say if the next city planner would be up for, you know, this amount of responsibility? And that's, that's, I really am opposed to this plan.
How about that's saying? We're not voting, you guys aren't voting.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think, I come in here every day, I mean, I just see the low permits that we're going through and the back and forth. And to me, it's a critical step, but we need to start expediting this stuff faster. I like the fact that, you know, it allows individual planning commissioners to review the applications during this process. And I think that's a benefit.
I do too.
You know?
Because we've, someone had that problem in the past. Or that perception that you join the planning to get work done on your house. I don't want that to ever happen again in this, in our area. Like, stuff would be built while people were on, were on committee. And this isn't, this isn't anything that's recent. And again, I'm saying this is perception, this is what you hear, and this is maybe what you see too. But I'm not going to blame anybody, I'm not going to say anything like that. But I'm saying, you put one to two people, you might be, you might get back into that. Not saying Michelle at all. I'm just saying, like, like you, like you brought up.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
If Michelle's not here or somebody, something could happen in that. So I like the three, maybe a party of three or more that.
That all sounds like we need one.
Yeah, four, yeah. And that's, yeah, that's, I, I see that.
As long as it's expedited.
That's my biggest thing too. How do we expedite it with, with making sure we're making the correct decisions and the fair decisions for everybody in the town, most importantly?
I mean, if they do a pre-review, you'd think there should be a checklist made, right? So then when that, when they re-cement, that checklist goes through back where she looks at it. And if they want to put a group of two or three together to come and do an individual check beyond that check, that's what that allows to do, which would expedite rather than waiting for another, every other Thursday, whatever those Thursdays are. It's all about expediting a little bit faster to go back up. So that's how I see it.
Totally agree.
No, this is all good. It's all about retaining the historic integrity of the town. Expediting it for developers, I don't think that's our job. I think our job is, you know, helping the town maintain some kind of historic integrity. It's getting harder and harder. And to take this away will make it even harder. So I'm a little much for it. But, and I think that if you want to take away some of this, take away the pre-design review. Because, but then people have to pay the extra fee. Like I said, that's a courtesy, and I actually like that very much. But I think, we're, excuse me, you guys, I'm talking. I think we're, we're happy to expedite other parts of the process. You know, the code revision, you know, have seven people look at code revision and write it. We've done that, it takes a long time. Three or four of us can do it much faster, which would expedite that process, which would make things a little faster.
Go back to that, other subcommittee panels.
Yeah, we've been doing that. We did livestock phones, we did solar panels, we submitted. It's a different thing though, Grant, this is a whole different thing. This is like why we exist, as far as I'm concerned, is to actually do that stamp of approval on projects or say, you need to fix it. And I agree, if it's not Michelle's here, I'm actually, I could live with it if she doesn't ever go away. But I've worked with four different planners, and this would not have worked with three of them. And I consider that a difficult situation.
I agree. Michelle, do you want to answer?
No. No. In light of recent decisions, I don't think I'm going anywhere, so.
Well, that's good.
Ooh, good.
But they also have, I mean, you guys mull on that one, but I noticed here that the deck and fence permit is actually removed from this and that's new to us. So what's going on there?
Okay, so that actually, this, we do need to discuss a little bit on the fence. I was letting you guys finish this portion, but. Deck, I don't know why deck and fence was ever actually in there. That's already dictated by the building code, doesn't need to be in there. So the problem that we're having, and this is going a little bit in the weeds, but the problem that we're having is the city, within the last month, has probably gotten, I don't know, four or five different ones, where the city has issued a fence permit to build a fence on the neighbor's property. And we can no longer do that. So the option is to either require a survey for every fence, which obviously is not probably the best option, or to discontinue issuing a permit for a fence. So this would not eliminate them from design review, because they're still subject to design review. But it does eliminate a fence permit, as long as it's under seven feet, because the building code requires that you get one over seven feet anyway.
So that the current, like, four-foot, six-foot, eight-foot levels that we have.
So those, those codes will all stay in place, and we will still be able to do code enforcement on those. They just won't actually, the city won't actually be providing a document that says you are allowed to build this four-foot fence on this, so it alleviates some liability from the city in that regard.
The neighbors, I see each other, right?
Yep.
We have, we have a Metta's office, so we haven't, we're not quite up to date, so proceed.
I haven't told them that yet, so, no. And then deck permit, I mean, a permit would be required for a deck no matter what. And that, again, still does not alleviate it from design review, just, just is not specifically listed there. And that was mostly to get rid of that fence permit under the seven feet.
I should probably say the three previous planners actually did really good work in lots of ways. This particular thing would not have worked with those particular individuals.
Understood.
Just to get myself out of it.
Yeah.
Although I hope myself. I realize.
We, we understood.
Public information.
Well, I think, you know, then if there are other ways to expedite work that doesn't take away that value of those two guys. But I don't know if that answer is necessarily. But we have a ton, I feel like there's a lot of code review and revision that we're looking at or that we want to do.
And unfortunately, that one is difficult to expedite, because that one is lined up pretty clearly in the code. So no matter if we have subcommittees or whatever we do with that, it still has to come before the planning commission for a recommendation and a public hearing, and then go to the council for a public hearing. So those ones are harder to expedite. I mean, yes, we could do them faster with a subcommittee, but they're a little harder to expedite.
Just to get the structure built in to how we.
Yeah, because as a GMA.
Change.
Yep. As a GMA, anything within our development regs has to go to commerce and, so like even this, we may not even adopt any of this change. But if you look, if you look online, they've got municipal code updates. And if you look at how many things I've had to submit to commerce and the SEPA checklist and, just for something that we're proposing that we may not even adopt.
You're talking about code, you're not talking about design review?
Yeah, I'm talking about code. So yeah, so anything, so like this, just this small little change requires all of that to be done in order to update. Just three sentences in the code even. So that one gets harder to expedite, but.
Michelle, did things slow down when we went to only one meeting a month? For the busy, for, did that slow down the process?
No, not really. I mean, it, it's pretty much this, I mean, I don't think, because how many did we have on that last one? Like, maybe seven or eight on there? So, I mean, I don't know. And they all, the problem is, they all just wait till the last, the la, the week before anyway, so it doesn't matter. Whenever they know the meeting is, it comes in the week before type thing. But, but yeah, it, it is, what makes it a little bit difficult with the way the process works now is you get a release of architectural design reviews, and then a week later, those seven people that you did architectural design review all bring their plans in all at once, instead of, instead of a steady trickle of, of that going down the pipe. So.
Right.
It, yeah, I mean, I, I don't know what the full answer would be, but, yeah, it, it does. I mean, without meeting every week, which is obviously not feasible, I don't know how you would.
Did you have something? Well. The planning historic committee was meeting twice a week at one point or twice a month? It seems like that would alleviate seven things coming in at one time.
It, it still creates that, you've still got a bunch and a bunch, so I mean.
Well, yeah, but it's a bunch and a bunch rather than a bunch. Right? And so, you know, I mean, if, if that's one of the major critiques that everything is coming in at one time because there's only one meeting a month, then the logical conclusion is that having two meetings a month would alleviate some of that. Would it alleviate all of it? Might be five and two, but it certainly wouldn't necessarily be all at one time.
So, and then the other side of that issue is with the two meetings a month, that creates additional staff time, staff work, which that was what was trying to be eliminated, I think, when we went to the one meeting a month.
But if, if that's being eaten up by taking it more of, of staff time to handle this big influx at one time, could be a wash.
Just, just to clarify, our two meetings a month were during the high season of design? So like, in the winter time, unless we were working, I'd probably just meet once a month. So it was like, seize it all kind of.
Yeah, probably not that many.
Not, well, not in winter, but in the summer, in the spring and summer, when things would pick up.
Is, is staff requirement for this particular?
Yeah, yeah, because I have to, so once they make their decision, then I have to draft a letter to each applicant that says if it was approved or denied. So a lot of that is, there's a lot, there's a lot more than just the decision that goes into play, because the code requires a notice of complete application, a notice of decision, a notice of, so there's a whole bunch of requirements with. So there's a whole bunch of requirements within that that also create, which is fine, I mean, I don't, you know, it doesn't... Yeah, I mean, it's, it is what it is, but, but yeah, it, it, when you have it twice a month, then you're, you're stopping everything in here to do it twice a month on the same. So I, I don't know, it's, there's probably not a great, perfect solution in my mind.
A really harsh winter would do it. At least from Orion.
Yeah, that gets...
Well, that's the only problem then, additional staff time, because can we just recover that with our fees?
Well, I don't really answer to that. But in light of the discussion that we just had, I, I don't know. I mean, we've, we've gone to the one meeting a month, we moved it up to, they moved it up to five o'clock from six o'clock, and then we're still in a position where we've got too much staff overtime, so I, I don't know. I don't know, we've cut the overtime considerably.
Well, I'm not interested in overtime, I'm interested in paying, people paying for what the plan is required.
Yeah, and they're, they're, I mean, they're probably legitimately paying, so it's $250 for an architectural design review. So that's probably legitimately covering it, it's just a matter of finding enough hours in the day then at that point to, to actually do it without, to do, to balance everything, I guess.
So it's not really staff time or support?
Well, to get it all into a 10-hour day, it, it becomes a problem sometimes. So, you know, the week after, so that we have a meeting on a Thursday, for example, and then I get here, so Monday, Tuesday is taken up with, with cleaning all of that up, so then you don't get started on plan reviews till Wednesday, and then that's, you've got Wednesday, Thursday, so you're doing, you're splitting the time. And then you've got, four, four to five permits come in here a day, fence permits and everything, and I can only get probably one, maybe two out the door if I'm lucky today. And then that's not including architectural design review too. So, it's, we have a lot of permits in this town, a lot.
Well, if we're gonna be avoiding overtime, I'm not sure that expediting is in our best interest.
Well, yeah, we just need to keep looking at it, and what we can do to make the process any faster, but, yeah.
Any more discussion on this one, or should we do our presentation? Mitch, are you ready for a presentation, bud?
Yeah, yeah, sorry. We probably should have looked at the agenda, I'm used to a seven o'clock council meeting. Are you gonna do that presentation?
Well, can we either do that, or can we just talk? Actually, we have an opportunity to study that.
Thank you for being here early, huh?
Yeah, sorry about that.
There was a, before, while Jane's setting up, I'd like to give a quick thing from the CAC, if I got some time. So there was an email, could someone hand me a copy of that email, if you're ready, right? So, there's a couple of things that the CAC wanted me to bring forward. The first one is an email that I sent out today regarding some trail recommendations that we've been working through. Basically, what we're looking at and working with some of the public, there was a desire to open up a new trail, or reopen a trail up, this Trail 1A. Trail 1 is actually the Alaska Road, the road that comes off Alaska that's been used for logging. There's been a lot of material that's put down to actually sustain logging trucks and all the equipment that had to go up. It's not, the experience isn't as great for an up-track, both for hikers and bikers, and I would assume horseback riders. And so there was a recommendation to put in, reroute Trail 1A. And then with that, so we've discussed that, we've been working on some trail alignments on that, on that 1A portion, and working with some of the citizens on that. With that, we wanted to potentially decommission what's remaining of 2A. So TNC came to our last meeting and said up on their property that they're managing, they're looking at decommissioning that trail. They've talked with some user groups, and that's really not a preferred trail, and we've already decommissioned or excluded the bottom half of that trail. And 2A also had some significant impacts from this past logging. And so we'd like to potentially abandon this, decommission it, with the caveat that if there is an alternative route that is determined in the future by the user group communities, that we would entertain that. And then we'd also like you to consider our recommendation on Trail 4, on the Florida western side of town. That's not a trail that was completed, it was a planned trail that was approved, but it was never completed. It's also the main eastern route for the Towns to Tianway that was approved by council, but we'd like to just not build that. It was intended as an up-track, but most of the people that do use that side of the forest come down 4B. And so to kinda do the balancing act of managing new trails and all the things we're trying to accomplish with the CAC, we thought and felt that 4 was kind of redundant in, in respect to its location to 4B. And, and so we'd like to just not, take that off the map as well. So we'd like you guys to consider that. And we'd like that, something potentially to put on the next council agenda for a decision, but also giving the public more time to digest this, 'cause we haven't had, we've talked with some folks. But I think now that we've made this recommendation, I think it'd be great to hear from a broader community if there is support or not support, and why, and just a further discussion about that. But that's a recommendation that's coming from the CAC. And, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
Uh, no, I'm just here to answer any questions you really might have on 1A, because I brought the recommendations to the CAC. So it's all flagged out right now. With that, if we get approval now, I'm ready to go this weekend. Got kind of a short timeline here, because we're going in with some restricted in what kind of work they can do in the urban forest. So, that's kind of why I'm here, just to answer questions.
So, go ahead.
Have you just, I mean, I know you do mountain biking, so have you discussed some of this with the mountain biking groups, or what their feedback is on the trail? Yeah, I figured you had, that's why I wanna ask, just to make sure.
Yeah, I mean, we've actually been talking about this for, for, since the, the roads went in and the logging.
Lance mentioned something?
Yeah, talking about a different way to get through the urban forest, instead of going up a road that has rock like that.
And so if, upon your approval, we'd start doing the planning and working on getting some volunteers and work parties up there. And that leads into another thing I wanted to mention, on the 18th of May, we had a volunteer work party. Thanks a lot to the support of Mount St. Greenway, Carver Duett from the Nature Conservancy, and, and also the Trail Subcommittee from the CAC, we actually had a plenty of people out. Spent about four hours working rehab trails that were impacted from the logging, had a lot of fun, got dirty, gotta swing some tools, and got some trails rehabbed and back to the place. And those are the things that we'd like to continue to do, I just wanted to inform you on that. And then one final thing, Towns to Tianway is seeking applications for their leadership group, and this is the, the group that's doing the overall comprehensive trail planning that they've done in this broader context of these trails and the property between TNC and some private property owners, and providing connections to all the communities. They're seeking applications. Melissa Speed from KCT is also a member of the CAC Trail Subcommittee. KCT, in our interests in working through our mission, we're going to have her apply. But she could also help be the voice that comes back and works with the CAC and potentially even the council, if no one else is looking at applying. She just wanted to see if that was something that you all would support. And she would then also be responsible for reporting back to the Roslyn Urban Forest Advisory Committee, as well as the city council on potential recommendations and decision points that need to be made, and just general updates. If you guys want information, she could be that person if you wanted. She is going to be applying for the work that we do together for KCT, but that can be a dual role for her if you, if you want, or if you guys wanna have your own liaison or someone that applies as well. I just was gonna offer that up and see what you guys hope about that.
So I know you weren't looking for approval, but in Woody's comments in the back, do you have any objection on anything that's on here? We could just make a, a motion to approve it tonight, and move forward, and get this going, and get the momentum going with the CAC? And also with the recommendation for Melissa being a liaison for the... For the city, yeah, for the city? But again, I'm just throwing that out there, I have no problem with what I read today, and, yeah, I just wanna keep the motivation going for the CAC.
Do you make any proposals? I, I'm sorry. I would like to have some more thought and reflection on the 4 and the 4B. One of the things that the 4B does is it does connect over the top of the urban forest from, from the east side.
Was 1A being affected, is that correct?
No. 4 was originally proposed and moved forward as an alternative. But it was never, I think it was started, but never completed as a trail. So it just exists mostly in that, not on the... Right, no, this was a formal recommendation.
Right. It's on there as a...
It's on there, but what I, I haven't actually walked it, but from what I've heard from the folks that were involved in all that, it's never been completed, it was only just roughly started, it wasn't completed.
Maybe we just have a motion that says we can begin work on 1A?
Yeah, that's the first motion. Yep, just, I'll make a motion to have the CAC work on 1A, and then come back at our next meeting with an update, or a, another... Or we can put the rest on the agenda, if time's permitted.
Yeah, that's fine, I mean, this is, I think, it, it's important for me to stress to the CAC that we're trying to balance the amount of trails we have within the urban forest, and how we can manage and maintain those. And there is concern with adding new trails without considering potentially those other trails that have, aren't as used and utilized, or have potential resource concerns besides that, or maintenance concerns. We need to consider also, when we're thinking about adding more, we have to think about what are those things that we can give up? Because there are multiple objectives within the land storage or plan that we have to balance with recreation. And we have a very dense network of trails, and I don't know if to see, we have a pretty lengthy discussion about the need to balance that with adding new trails. And so, I think that recommendation might be different from the CAC if we're not considering also the recommendations in force. I do think it's appropriate to really consider how key recommendations move forward, so we allow proper time and venue for people to provide comments on these. We discuss them at meetings, but we generally don't have a lot of public comment or meetings. And if we have more avenues for that, I think that's great, but it'd be great to have, like, okay, when CAC makes a recommendation on this, what is the next step, and how does that go? Is it gonna be, we go to council, present, you say yes, no, argue we say this is just a proposal that we're providing to you, and then in the next council meeting, we would then give you time for reflection, give the community more time to hear what the proposal is and understand it, or come to a meeting when they're gonna discuss potentially approving it, and be able to have those discussions. We don't really have that kind of real formal, like, what, what is that process? And so I definitely feel for Woody and like the need to get out there and do some work before it just becomes too problematic. But also, there's other things in terms of making sure we have opportunities for public to weigh in on these recommendations as well, so...
And I feel that too, for the, the public comment, but if they want that public comment, they're more than welcome to sit at these meetings, sit in your meetings, sit on the board, and I just want you guys to go, I want you guys to, like how we're, we've wanted to for a while, is just make that the Roslyn Forest what we, what everybody wants it to be.
All I'm saying is if you just approved the one, making a new trail, I don't know if the recommendation from the CAC would be the same as what you see in front of you. I don't know if we'd be prone to deal with that recommendation without removing or having the consideration of removing these two, one that doesn't exist and one that we've already decommissioned halfway, probably is gonna be decommissioned above us. And they have reached out in their support for me, that there would be a potential to reroute that trail at some point if it's needed, but, you know, it's just, it's just trying to balance all the things we're trying to balance with the LSP. So I, I cannot say that the CAC would support at this time just approving 1A with a further discussion on the decommissioning of the trails.
Go ahead and finish. Just reminder to council that the Roslyn Urban Forest Trail Plan Map, names and trails are approved by council, the map is approved as a whole. So, you know, in regards to the CAC and the communication that we've had and haven't had, it should probably go back to them, and then they can recommend, and then we can put together a resolution and move forward.
Is this not what the CAC's recommending?
Yeah, this is the recommendation.
Yeah, it's a CAC recommendation.
So we should just put it on the agenda then, for the next meeting?
And that's fine.
And allow the public comments, like you mentioned. And then that'll give more time for reflection, like you mentioned. So what I'm hearing is that... If... That the only way that the CAC will authorize the building of 1A is with removal of 4?
The discussion, so the discussion we had was the need to balance trails with all the other objectives within the LSP. And so that's how we came to the determination that these were two areas, one a trail that hasn't been built, and one a trail where we partially decommissioned already, and it's definitely impacted in the area that's left. And landowners above us are considering decommissioning theirs, that would be one that... So that would be, that was how we came to that, okay, we're gonna add one, and we're gonna balance that trail and its overall trail density with this.
Even though they were both initially voted on by council and approved?
Right, that's, that's our job though, is to try and balance the LSP with all the things that are there. And so, Trail 1A, it's there, it's been approved, but it's tall, it's not there. And, you know, we, we had, we had discussions about that, but we feel if we're gonna rebuild that, we wanna do something, get rid of those problematic trails that either aren't there, or redundant, or are working with other partners.
Do we even need to approve 1A, it's already on there?
It's a reroute of 1A.
Oh, it would be reroute?
Yeah, 1A was pretty much completely gone on the 1A.
I really don't see a reason why we can't vote on 1A today.
Well, you can, I'm just saying you're not taking the CAC's recommendation.
And we don't...
You don't have to, but I'm just saying that the CAC would not have recommended, might not have come with this recommendation for 1A without the caveat of the... So I'm not gonna speak for the whole CAC, but I'm just gonna speak to the conversation we had with them. And so you might not have had this attorney as a reroute of Trail 1A.
And 2A, that's already a continuation of that, of that one, of the discontinuing, that decommissioning that trail. That one's had several runoff issues and steepness. When you were on council, we discussed why that one should then be commissioned, and so I assume it's partially decommissioned right now, is that correct?
Yeah, on the map, it's partially, it's partially decommissioned.
And how far off is that, about halfway of its trail?
Yeah.
And so you're talking the latter half that connects up past the private property?
Which is also gonna be just planned.
TNC came and talked with us today, and on, on the last meeting, we said that they were considering removing that, going to hurry.
So you would support that?
To me, it's just a continuation of the decommission status to me, and that's how I look at 2A, it's just the second phase that they didn't get to. I used to do that trail, I know how steep it is, and I know how much it gets in the fall. It's an awful trail, you know, you can see why it's getting decommissioned. So, I mean, I would pass 1 and 2 in a heartbeat, wouldn't think twice about it right now. And I know that 1A, it used to be the trail, I think, till the first logging phase, and then it got decommissioned during that one, three or four years ago.
The first two, obviously.
Yeah, we just had this discussion, this session three or four councils ago about activating that trail with the name, make that name.
Yep.
Well, and I feel like there actually already has been some public input related because of the work of Towns to Tianway, and the discussions that we've had between council and CAC in terms of what routes are we gonna pick in our forest to be their connection with the overall system?
And that's the thing, that's the crux of 4, we pick that as our easterly route to connect to Towns to Tianway, and it's not even a trail that exists as a, as a council route to follow with it to Towns to Tianway. And so we're just proposing that we move that before we, and that we start 4A.
Okay, well, I, I under, I was at the V's, and that was discussed to eliminate those two trails, 4 and what the other one was. But I didn't know it was contingent on allowing 1A. I didn't, I didn't hear that, maybe Nipster, but I didn't hear that. And that was up for discussion, I'm not trying to blindside anyone, but that wasn't my understanding. I know that it was talked about, you know, eliminating 1A, a couple trails, 4, and the other one, but I didn't know it was contingent.
It was, there was the discussion that we thought were going to be... It was, there was the discussion that we thought we're going to be, you know, if we're going to be doing that, it would make sense to also try to consider those trails that are redundant, are, are a resource hazard, are, you know, just aren't, they don't have the same user experience, getting rid of those kinds of trips, I'd say. And, and so that's why the recommendation came forth as you see it forward. That's why I'm, I'm not saying one A is contingent on it, I'm just saying that's not the discussion that we had. We had the discussion of how do you balance recreation with all the other things that we're trying to accomplish. Now, you guys can make your, you can look forward on what you want, but I'm just saying that if those two weren't on the table, I don't know if we'd be coming forth with the same recommendation. I can't speak to the whole CAC because it was a group. We, we talked about these three things, it's one, we wanted to make that a recommendation.
When was that, what's the latest version of that map, how old is that?
That's fourteen or so.
You know, so it's, so it's five years we haven't built this trail, we said we could build.
Well, I don't know if it's been five years, but it's been a number of years.
We did logging in that time, so, yeah.
We have.
Okay, I'm just saying, you know, here's a plan, we have a plan, we haven't done it yet.
Oh, above Alaska we have, but not in the four.
But not, yeah, yeah.
For whatever reason.
But also along that timeframe, that trail number four was then designated as the Towns to Tianway trip.
As not, as not completed.
Right, but as being the eastern trap. So it's not like it just sat for five years, it was revisited and reauthorized specifically to address the Towns to Tianway connection. So. With a lot of, I believe, public process and many different, you know, the TNC looking at it as well as being a preferred trap. So now to have, okay, no, we're not going to do that. There was a lot of process there that identified that one.
So I would really encourage you guys to reach out to the CAC and have this conversation before you make a decision. And ask the other members, I mean, I'm here presenting what I remember and what, what I was asked to present from the CAC. I think it's reasonable, I think it's completely consistent with the LSP and it's consistent with all the work that we're trying to do, that recommendation is probably. You know, I just, I would really encourage you all, if you've got intrepidation about it, let's have a conversation about it and spend some time talking about it.
Which is what I was saying at the beginning.
Right.
Now, and then what I heard was, well, then we have to revisit number one, so.
Well, what I was hearing was you guys were completely willing to put one in a different place and the conversation we had was different at the CAC. And I think we need to talk with the whole CAC about it because the recommendation wasn't just build one A. The recommendation was to build one A, decommission what's left of two A, and remove four from the map and add four B as that connector trail for Towns to Tianway.
I'm wondering why we didn't choose four B.
Because CAC was not at that public meeting where you guys determined what trails were going to be connected in the Towns to Tianway, or they would have been able to tell you that four doesn't exist.
The big thing too, because of four is because of parking.
We knew when we made that.
Right.
Yeah, we knew it didn't exist.
But the biggest thing was parking. We, we wanted to send people somewhere where they could park and recreate and four made the most sense. I agree with this though, I have walked four and four is no way a great trail. It's straight up mudslide.
No, parking for four and four B are exactly the same.
But they're, yeah, but that's why we put four Towns to Tianway, that's why we put it.
Yeah, no, it'd make, make sense to have the connector trails on the east and west ends of town for parking and accommodate for folks, especially the popularity of the track pulling up Alaska.
Quite a bother. I don't think we can decision today before we're not just at least the table.
I still would like to make a motion to approve one and two, quite honestly, and leave three on the table, but, because I would like to, you guys to still do work and that right there is, I think valuable work, but one and two, four we can wait, or three we can wait on, I believe, and I'll second.
I have no objection. There's a motion on the table to accept one and two and fail three.
And I want to state though, I'm sorry about that change in your process, that's not the recommendation that's before us, but that's part of the recommendation and this is kind of the way that we're going to work on bettering our relationship on the CAC and the city council and the communication. But I think moving forward, we really want to see some work happening and we want to see it before you can't do any work in the forest.
Okay, and I would just recommend that you guys come up with how these things, have clarity on how the process works. So we can actually, when we're sitting in front of folks at a CAC meeting, we can say this is, this is how things happen.
So I think having a joint meeting and sitting with the CAC and figuring this out, so we're not, it's not on our plate to say, hey, this is what we want. I think we should come together and say, how is the best way we can all communicate together so we're all getting things across on, on the same level? If that's, oh, if that's not.
It would've been helpful with the planning permission.
Correct, huge.
We did do one.
Yeah.
The other thing was Melissa and Melissa and CNN, they need the city.
Well, we didn't finish that.
Well, yeah, that's just an option. So for the motion on the table to accept one and two, on the table say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, so that motion to accept recommendation one and two consistent. And then we were talking about Melissa as a speaker. Melissa the applicant to represent the city of all of the towns of Tianway. Second, yeah. Any further discussion?
Assuming her application is accepted.
Assuming no council member wants to apply to this.
I think it would be awesome for me to provide that.
Okay, all in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, so Melissa, please on. Now please, how about a praise attention?
Well, I'm, I'm, first of all, I know you have a very busy day, and I, I'm so sorry we came late, we really, we understood it seems like, but, and we'll try to put this pretty brief. My name is Jane Kiker, I met Melissa you a year, about a year ago when we, Mitch and I first came and presented a joint presentation on the idea of protecting the Don Marie Creek watershed in order to protect, best protect the water supply. And I'm just circling back, we've, everything's about the same, I'm just going to recap some of the background from TNC's perspective and where we are. And if this will work. Here, the dark green property, as you mostly know, is property managed by TNC and it's owned by an LLC called Central Cascades Forest LLC. It's land that formerly was concrete timberland and about four short years ago, before my time at TNC, TNC secured, it's about forty-eight thousand acres. And they secured it with impact investment, they did it through the LLC with debt and equity. And the whole idea was that TNC would manage it and would transfer all of this land out to appropriate conservation landowners, whether it's public agencies or private conservation buyers. The, the checkerboard originally came from the fact that back in the eighteen fifties, eighteen sixties, the US government granted sections, alternating sections to the railroads in Northern Pacific. And once the railroads themselves were built, there was a lot of surplus land that had really good timber on it. And so all those lands basically got shifted over to subsidiary companies, timber companies in the roads, including eventually concrete. The problem was that you have this alternating public-private ownership and management and it was crazy hard to manage the forest properly. And so increased fire, fire risk and impeded wildlife migration patterns and all kinds of problems. So TNC's goal in doing the whole CCF project was to consolidate the checkerboard and basically transfer these lands to appropriate public or private parties that would basically block it up so that the management made sense and you could manage it holistically and you could do forest health and watershed protection and wildlife protection and recreation. So the little area in, that's outlined in red are the Don Marie, what we refer to as the Don Marie parcels. There is a, a better map, I was, I think it's a better map, that shows those parcels outlining yellow in the context of the local communities and Roslin's water system. And so, as well as Sankadia. You can see the access to the parcels, you can see the water, the Roslin pond and intake up in the, in the upper left corner and the water main comes down. We, on that one section in the middle there, Roslin has pond intake, road easement, you know, pipe easement, all kinds of things. But the parcels are, they've been divided up already and you can see on the, there's a better slide coming up actually, I'll show you more how the parcels work. So, sorry, look at that. So we know the city recognizes the importance of maintaining the best water quality and special clients to support the water service area. The city's already taken important steps to acquire and protect water rights and continually updates and maintains its water system infrastructure. However, it is also important to recognize that the city could play a key role in acquiring these parcels and actually protecting the entire watershed from further development and infrastructure that could, that could impair the, the water quality. TNC and KCT want to emphasize that we're all in this together, we, like the city, are committed to ongoing relationships to support forest protection in addition to clean water, fish and wildlife habitat and a community connection to nature. Ownership of the parcels for the enable management of forest health and wildlife resilience. When TNC accepted management, arranged for the management of this property, under the LLC framework, we were given ten years to transfer these lands out. That's, the clock is ticking. We're not, nobody really knows what would really happen after ten years, but we lose control. So TNC and its conservation values is, isn't involved. The investors, the investors we work with are, are green, but they're also investors and they want to get paid back. So we do feel like it's really important to transfer the property while we can still help and direct that they be protected as opposed to sold for their highest and best use. One of the, one of the other benefits of either the city owning these parcels or the city acquiring the parcels and transferring to an organization like KCT to manage is that they can be managed for forest health and fire resilience. As you, I don't have to tell you, the frequency intensity of fires, it's a very big increase in Washington, you were all affected by the nineteen, the two thousand seventeen John Mountain Fire. There are strategies that are consistent with the collaborators that TNC's been working with over here that call for immediate fuel reduction, sustainable harvesting, replanting to enhance diversity and then even introducing prescribed fire and controlled burn for landscape to help really reduce the damage. Here's the, here's the more zoomed in version of the map I was showing you earlier and a little more detail on these three sections, portions of sections. The top one is, we also call that the comma because it looks like a comma and it's not a whole section. That is actually three different parcels, it's about a hundred and forty acres and total ballpark, because we've, we have not had an appraise, we don't know. The ballpark value we've assigned it right now is about a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. And you'll see this in section nine too. The values are high and that's because they've been parceled up. And any appraiser would assign those part, those parcels, their highest and best use, which is in this location, residential development. So there's a real threat there that they could be developed and they really shouldn't be, to protect the watershed at least. But about two-thirds of the portion of section four is in the Don Marie Creek watershed. And then section nine, it's about, it's a full section, it's six hundred and forty acres, approximate value again is eight thirty to eight fifty. There are nine separate parcels already. It's almost entirely within the Don Marie watershed and it includes, as I said before, it includes the, the pond, the intakes, the access road and the utility easements that the city owns. And then finally, section sixteen to the south is up and, kind of goes up and over the ridge, it's the, where eastern ridge trails off to the east. And it actually contains about thirteen hundred linear feet of the Yakima main stem on the property and there's a lot of critical wildlife habitat connected to that parcel. So we've been, since last year, we, every once in a while we go back and we say, wow, well, what could, what could happen here? And we told you about this pretty amazing program that actually we expanded, it's a pretty modern program, grant program that's administered through the state department of anthropology. And they offer grants and they offer very low interest loans, some of which are forgivable for clean projects. And recently, the program was expanded to include not just like targeted stormwater projects or like water system projects, but actually acquisition of land just to protect it if it's a new watershed. Because that's really the most permanent protection you can, you can achieve. So there is this program. One possibility, and there are many different ways to look at this, and the resolution we prepared, I think it's the same as what we presented last year as a draft, it's just, would the city be willing to agree to explore these options with us? So one possibility is that the city of Roslin could acquire sections four and nine from CCF through the water quality program and there would be a possibility to later transfer to KCT or another organization that could manage. Or the city, or the city could, in order to manage it itself, much like the urban forest. It is about eight hundred acres for sections, portions of section four and nine. And then Critical Conservation Trust is, is exploring, is interested in acquiring section sixteen to the south and would probably apply next year for a recreation conservation state WWRP grant for either critical habitat or.
Probably three thousand.
Possibility. We did start, I have, we have a technical staff person who can help right now on the water quality permit or grant. And she's just sort of roughed out what the application might look like and we forwarded that in her packet, if you have it. It's very draft and we, I mean, KCT has barely begun having an opportunity to look at it, but it's, it's just a start, we wanted to give you an idea of what it looked like. I think the most important thing to remember about the water quality, there are a couple of reasons why, I mean, we could, we're standing ready to help and give technical assistance on the grant writing and I think that's, that goes for both TNC and KCT. But there are two very important reasons for why the city should be the titular, the named applicant on this permit. One is that under the water quality program, there are some grants that you can get if you're a nonprofit and there are other grants that are much, have much bigger buckets of money, of dollars, that are available to cities and counties. And so it would open up a lot of opportunities and a project would probably rank higher and get more funding if the city were the applicant. So that's one thing. The other is that it's. The other is that it's going to matter that the city, the city is actually, you know, showing that it really cares about the watershed. I mean, if the city's water, and it's harder for a nonprofit to go in and say, we think you should protect this for the city. And it would be more compelling if the city itself sort of put skin in the game and said, yeah, this is our application. The final reason I was going to say, and I have to go back to the first slide of the lake, that's the third reason why the city applicant is reviewing these things because our technical staff might have thought that was the Dahmeri pond. But I think we could use some of you.
It's fair, because four and nine is blocked together or not?
They're not, they're actually not.
It's presented as a comma which is not.
It makes sense because four is also two-thirds in watershed and divided and it's.
There's a lot of other land up there, but it's not, I think it's mostly.
Most of it.
Most of it upstream is in the forest service. Yeah, in their ownership. But I think, I mean, my concern about the portion of four is just that it's, if that's developed, there's going to be people going all the way up there through, through section nine to access it. And there are already some people using roads through nine and they have a right to do that, but it's like if you just, if you increase it, it's going to be more, more traffic, more roads, more infrastructure.
Yeah, I mean, I would just say, look at, and refer back to that slide that had all the parcels that they showed, like in the whole general area. I mean.
Yeah, one back.
I mean, they're, they're, look at that. I mean, already there's a threat to our watershed and already we're having impacts. So, all that green around Sankadia, that's our conservation easement up in Sankadia. And we get a lot of traffic, illegal traffic, non-allowed use from eastern into that Tumble Creek and Dahmeri area. And we're working with WDFW law enforcement on how we can handle that. But, you know, if the potential of those areas in the wrong hands, you're going to see sections parceled up much like you see in the eastern area and over there, that could happen. And, you know, for, from our perspective, we're really interested in this and kind of continuing the protection we have in those wildlife corridors within the Sankadia master plan resort and the easement areas we have, as well as continuing the fuels reduction forest work that we're doing in the easement plan, but our direct threat is coming in from the west. How do we make sure that those lands are managed and maintained appropriately? That's another thing with our watershed, most of it is in forest service ownership for more people. How many more ignition sources do you have there? I mean, if you actually look at the statistics, how do most fires start? They'll start by, like, they start from people. They start from people doing stupid things. And that's just, that's in people's nature. And, you know, they go out there and they have fun, whether they're riding their RVs or having a campfire or even just drilling and dumping out their charcoal grill a day later going up, you know, I didn't know it was a burn ban and it's like, it was up for a day, it's fine. And I'd say, you know, you got a fire. We would lose everything if we lost the watershed. Already take pond, we gone, no more water. It would, it would take us years to recover from it.
The city has done a really admirable job at obtaining and maintaining the water rights. So, you've got the water quality and that should be secure, but the water quality is really important and as long as it's, you know, it would be just kind of ideal to set it aside.
I mean, when people turn on their caps in Roslin, they don't go, wow, that's a, that's a good quantity of water. They like that water because we got some of the best water in the country.
Yeah.
I used to work at the treatment plant, I used to, I learned from Joe, like, all about our water system and it's amazingly simple and it's amazingly awesome. It's a hell of a research.
But currently, we are very interested in this parcel and we did annex the watershed some 20 years ago, 25 years ago. As a, as a measure of our concern about the issues they've dealt there, I hope that the council would encourage us to proceed and to help us figure this problem out. You know, money is obviously the, the broom, but with the grants and we do have a little bit of money in waters here that could be applied to this project and so, I hope that the council would say, yes, we're very interested in it.
You've got a lot of flexibility to look at, I'm sorry.
It says your grants are up to 50,000.
They're up to 500, yeah.
500K. Previous slide said one parcel is 850 and the other is, so we're looking at three of those grants.
Well, you're looking at either repeated grants or you're looking at a grant with a cash match, which takes it up to 667, but that's a match. And so, that would either have to come from budgeted funds or private donations or maybe, I mean, what's really cool about this program is this very long-term, really low interest loans. It's called the, let me refresh what it's called, maybe acronym, but Clean Water State Revolving Fund Loan Program. And basically, I don't know if I have the, I don't know if I have the actual figures, but they're very, very low interest and they're usually about 25% of them are forgivable if for a green project like this. So, that's another way to do it. Another thing we can look at is possibly, we're still looking at, but, but there might be a way to go after the state WWRP grant and use some of that fund to match the water quality program. You can actually do that, I think the problem here would just be making sure we had the right applicants lined up.
Well, I mean, you're exactly right though, I mean, we've got appraised, or a ballpark appraised value in what we're going for in grants. And, you know, yes, we need a 25% cash match, but that doesn't get us to where we need to be. And so, we're, that's, those are additional things that we need to work on with you guys on what is, what's the skin in the game the city can do and then what, what do we, what role do we need to play to try to get those either additional grants, outside fundraising? There are things that are out there that we can go to.
I, I fully support this. I, I just want to be, be clear on what supporting here.
Right, yeah.
And so, so we go out for the grant for 500K, we go, give with a 25% match, right? And that still means we need another million dollars.
Well, for the, you need another 350 to 400,000 just for the four and nine, yeah.
And so, next year, we do the same thing?
That's possible, they will do that. And you get.
This needs to be a complete package, I mean, how long can we sit on the 500,000?
You get four to five years under the grants.
Okay.
I have a slide at the end that shows the two grant programs going out, but four to five years to close.
Okay.
So, you do have time to build it up. And there may be, you know, I've, it's really hard to, for TNC to commit to anything, we have no idea what will happen, but we're ready, you know, right now, we could assist not only on the grant writing, but I've, I'm talking to the philanthropy group and we're hoping to maybe do some collaborative stuff with KCT and the city. So, there may be some private dollars there, it's just a hard.
Right, yeah, no, definitely.
But yeah, it is, they're very valuable properties, that's the thing.
Yeah, no, I think we need to, if we have some, a timeframe to start, to continue to work on coming up with the total amount.
And so, that's why right now, we're asking the city to revisit the resolution. We would really love to get the resolution adopted that said you were willing to work with us and explore. Later this summer, these Clean Water Act grant requests or proposals generally don't come out until August, so we're very early still. We're basing the current draft, it's based on last year's, but they're, they won't change very much year in year. And so, the RFP comes out in August and they're usually due in October. And so, by mid-August, we would really need to come back and get a more formal commitment, but probably for a further resolution, saying the city was agreed to be the applicant and to receive the grant. So, we, we would be working with you in interim and we would be coming up with a much more nailed-down plan. But that way, as I said, it does open, it shows us, the city has been in the game and it opens up, even though we're doing most of the work, and it opens up these other funding buckets that are really significant.
I think we have to pursue this and see what it owes.
Right.
Especially with your willingness to provide the human resource of the current applicant.
My human resources are on honeymoon right now.
But I mean, I think for even just getting that initial work done, that would, that's a big hurdle, but because we don't really have that resource.
Most definitely.
And it's opportunity too.
Right. And yeah, if it doesn't work this time, then maybe we know for next year, because we have this window that we're working against.
Do we need a resolution?
There is a resolution, I think.
We provided a draft and I don't know if there was.
There were very minor changes, just the word "and" and "a" and "then" and "then".
Sorry, is it okay with us?
Yes.
All in favor of this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Did you get the second?
Sure, wait. Yeah, and any updates, please, yeah, feel free to, we're, yeah, any kind of communication on this, we're eager to hear.
Good, we will, we will definitely. Is anybody in particular that we should be contacting, should we come back and have the council each time or?
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
And good luck with our super agenda this next week, man. We got this.
Chief Blan, did you have something?
Might just have the council reports.
Congratulations. He's interim chief.
I'll take care of it.
Sure. Mayor, council, thanks for having me today. My name's Fairclane, I've been appointed as the interim chief in Chief Ferguson's retirement. As you may have known, he went into surgery as part of his beginning stages of retirement. From that, he worked surgery well, is doing very well. Much better than his last one, so that's great. The police department, since his retirement, we're moving forward with a bunch of different things, I could be really brief. The first thing is that the budget had allowed for a corporal position to be put into place, that'll happen in mid-July, we're going to have between four and five applicants for that testing process and it'll be implemented by the end of July. We just got, I just left the other council meeting, that's why I was late. In that process, I was able to surplus four vertical junk vehicles, so we're getting that out of the way, cleaning stuff up and making room for new. We've applied for a couple of different grants. One grant that we look for is for some defensive tactics equipment in here and that is in correlation with sending two of our officers to the academy for, to be instructors for defensive tactics. Currently, we don't have any instructors in that realm and so, we're going to mitigate that. As you may be well aware, we train with the city of Elsberg as well as Kiddass County Sheriff's Office. The city of Elsberg does what we call an in-service training program, which is a 40-hour block of training that they host once a year. We are graciously invited each time to help repay for those services. They send me as the firearms instructor to help out the range with their training and now with the defensive tactics instructors, we can send that as well. So, we're actually giving back instead of just constantly receiving the money. So, a good position there. Also, on that note, I just returned from AR-15 armorless course that was held in Maple Valley. We're also looking at a grant for building security. Right now, the police department, it was initially built, I'm sure you're aware, we got a, I don't know what you call it, manufactured building and it was placed where they moved the house, a project that never been able to come to completion, I believe with budgetary issues back in the day. So, we're looking at grants to help with building security. That will help with securing the parking area, fencing cameras, a secondary address, et cetera. It is going to be substantial amount of money, so that's why we're going after grants to try and, try and do that. That's in the very infantile stages at this point, so I don't have anything to report on that other than that's something we're going to go for. We did do a scholarship. The city of Claylum lost an officer back in the seventies and eighties, some of you might remember Bill Lawson, and Bill Lawson is a memorial scholarship that the officer donated money to each month over paychecks to maintain his memory in the forum on the scholarship. This year, with the tragic loss of one of our county deputies and the injuries sustained by the Kiddass officer, that scholarship was a little bit more meaningful to us based on that. Instead of having a sole presenter for the scholarships, the entire department elected to, to attend the scholarship ceremony and present the scholarship and that was very well received. And we usually only give out two scholarships, however, this year we're able to fund three, so we're able to provide three scholarships to represent ourselves. Kind of the update for now. Let's see, have any other questions?
Appreciate it.
Keep up the good work.
Okay, next is the final reading on the park fee schedule.
Yes, we had discussed this, we've been a while since we initially started working on this, we can discuss it today if we need to and recommend.
Just one line of the current staff.
The main change, we're increasing fees, but the main change is we're trying to capture staff.
I'll make a motion to go through the resolution, amend the city of Roslin fee schedule.
Okay, we make one quick change to it. So, I just noticed when I was looking through it, if you go down, it's just a typo, I think, but if you go down to sewer connections, it says 5900, it's actually supposed to be 5938. I don't know why it says 5900, but just to revise that to 5938.
5,000?
5,000, sewer hookup?
You said 5,938.
Yeah, the appropriate amount is 5,938.
Okay. I made my motion to change, sorry, the sewer hookup to 5,938. I had one more question to, and I should have brought this up earlier, but ball leagues, general practices per day, we're looking at charging $20 per day for practices.
So, that is just, you guys can, I mean, we can amend that as well, so that, that was already in there, so that, the, the red portion, I don't know, did it print red on yours, I hope?
Yeah.
General practices per day was just added because everything else was clarified as being per day. So, if you guys want to, that, that's the only change, it already said ball leagues $20, so I don't know how, I don't even know that that was being charged previously, to be honest with you.
Could we maybe change that to like, per season, but change the amount? Because.
Yeah.
When we played softball, every team paid $200 towards the rental of the field or some, I can't remember the exact number, I just, it's been a little while.
It was something.
And I don't know how much had to go back to the, the field rental and then how much went back to the general of that, the fund there. But I think like, I think it was $200 to rent the field for the season.
Those are for tournament fees.
But there, and there is tournament fees, but that's only for a weekend, or per day, I guess, sorry, per day, which I still think $200 per day for a tournament?
Well, that's just the park, that's the same as the park rental fee, $200 per day.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I guess that's right, yeah. I just think the changing of the ball leagues to maybe season and doing that to, to 200.
So, you want to just read ball leagues, 200 per season?
Yeah, because it could be soccer, it could be baseball, so like a ball leagues per season for $200 for the season or something, I don't know, I'm throwing out.
I actually had a question about that too, but more in line.
I actually had a question about that too, but I'm more in line with where you're at.
They started, they started Monday and they end in August. Then they have a end-of-the-year tournament the week before Labor Day weekend. Which is a separate thing.
Yeah, that's separate, but how many, so do they use the park every week?
Every Monday and Wednesday.
Twice a week.
But, but in the caveat of that, which again, we don't, we won't always have this group of great softball players. Is they take, they have made that field ten times better than what it was. Again, that's not saying that later on in life we'll have a different group of management. But I want to, I want to have that clear, because I remember they asked me like, whoa, that's crazy, but. Uh, but I like to work with our baseball, softball, especially our youth. I'd almost say like, you could have a different little category in there with your youth sports season, but. Because that's different than, like when I was coaching T-ball, I was doing one day a week, Mondays on the T-ball field. And that's different than the softball field, which is going to be more care and take. So in, in my opinion, I wouldn't think it's fair to co, to have to pay two hundred dollars to coach T-ball. My opinion, or coaches pitch, or anything with youth in that matter. But when you start getting into kids that are eighteen and older, and the liability's there is different, because then it's. They're, they're, they have to have insurance and all that. It's not under Upper Kittas County Youth Baseball Association. Then we come into a different thing. But again, I'm not trying to throw curveballs everywhere. I just want to have like, some kind of, I think, definition on, on this ball league. Or the ush, usage of sports in our park. I am, but I went everywhere and I don't know where I.
Do you want to do ball leagues eighteen plus and ball leagues under eighteen in different fees? Is that what you're saying, or?
That would be, that's, I, that, that would be a good recommendation for the eighteen, eighteen and young, or eighteen and.
Well, is it depending on the field you're using then? Like, are you using the, I mean, is that one way to break it up?
Eighteen and young, younger, or seventeen and younger?
Well, I mean, what part of your, the field you're using?
Well, well, I think that would eliminate that, that what part of the field you're using, if you could say. If you could say youth, youth baseball is scheduling this part of the field, but then adult softball is using this part of the field, because they're paying X amount. So they're renting out this part of the field, they've already scheduled and blah, blah, blah. But there's openings in this T-ball or the soccer field portion of, you'd want to, if you want to throw that in there too.
So like the diamond versus the.
The field.
Yeah.
Or just sticking with under seventeen and un, under youth sports as a, as a different fee from eighteen and older sports.
I, I, I think I have seen that structure in other places, where it's, it's divided out by IDH. With your expressed idea that you're supporting the youth sports and once people are able to go out and have a job and all that kind of stuff, then they can afford it.
Then, yeah.
And.
What is your detail, so, so let's keep it as it is for the adults and what, go a quarter or half for the?
Well, yeah, a hundred, a hundred dollars for the, because every parent could pitch in to, to make that for their, their kids. That's a pretty good number to, I think, work with. But I just thought of this problem, is then we throw youth cycling in there. Youth cycling wants to use the park for their camping.
It's, they just pay, it's a special, that current fee and then the per park run all day. But what's not on there is camping. Do you want to charge a camping fee, you guys, which you guys have gone back and.
Yeah, we discussed about having camping fees overnight.
But can we back up for one second?
Yeah, sorry.
Let's not get there.
So ball leagues eighteen plus, you want to be how much per season?
I would say two hundred dollars.
As it is.
For the season.
As it is, for the season.
And then for the.
And for the youth, I'd say a hundred dollars for the season.
And we're clear that the season does not include a tournament at the end?
No, those are.
And it's set listed.
And I think the only thing that we have had to work out in the past was the softball field fencing with soccer field in the past few years. We've had some complications with soccer team practicing and the baseball team having a tournament.
Yeah.
So we need to make sure those areas are designated, because they're paying now. Yes, so we need to make sure that there's something set that says, you know, this is the softball outfield. I mean, you know, we've shown up and I've heard it many, many times, you get to complain, hey, they moved our fence in because they're playing soccer. I mean, it's constant. So we've got to have some other pay, other rules written in with just having fees that structure those areas for them. At least that's.
Well, we can do that. I mean, they're going to have to come in and pay for the park rental fee, so we can, we're going to have to create a.
Wrap it out.
Every year it becomes a debacle.
Yeah, yeah.
Fencing to soccer to softball and.
Okay, so now you can revisit your camping.
We talked about the trailer park, we talked about the trailer show, we talked about the bike event with the numerous tents and trailers coming in. With no fee structure whatsoever of camping in the park, right? Using infrastructure, using water, using waste. Yep. You've got to do something to capture costs, we know it costs us money.
I mean.
I could see, I mean, the bikers, the bikes with the tech camping, I mean, I don't know if you make five or ten dollars a night or twenty dollars for the weekend.
I think we have to do it just one, if you said, if your, if your event includes overnight, then it's.
X dollars.
Whatever number we want to say. I think we set up to a hundred dollars in some of our admin meetings.
For person or?
No, for the event. So like, if you figure they're, they're paying two hundred dollars per day, and then they're not just leaving, if they're staying overnight, then that would incur a camping fee. Even if there's, I mean, I think a lot of the events that people have started to do that, you know, because it is a multi-event, and so they pull up RVs and whatnot in there.
But didn't Mike just do an analysis of what it costs after certain events per year or per summer to?
I think it was just for the market.
Was that only for the market?
I think so. No, he did do one for the, he did do one for the park, and I want to say it was. So there's still a provision in this, it's always been in this, I just don't think that it's ever been enforced, but there's still a provision in here to charge, in the code, to charge for any fees incurred for staff time or whatever in the park. So that would all be additional to these fees that you're setting, but it was like, in the neighborhood of like twelve to fifteen hundred dollars per event. Of staff time and park prep.
I'm not quite thinking that much, but I, I.
Well, there was some discrepancies in, in what would actually be event-specific versus what's regular.
But like the bike event, I pay attention, no, there's, there's garbage, didn't use, there's utilities, can be.
We require.
Our infrastructure didn't use with no recuperation cost.
Don't we require they get a dumpster?
There's always, there's always a dumpster out there, but I don't know about the requirement.
Yeah, there's not a requirement.
No, and they're hooked up to the water, fill it up their tanks on there.
Oh, I get that.
Yeah, and all that, so we need to recoup that cost.
So there's already camping permits in here?
That is, and Michelle clarified that for me, that's for someone who's going to, for what, seven days camp.
Yeah, you can get it for a period of days, I don't know whether it's off the top of my head, but a period of days, if you're going to park on a parcel, for example, or if you've got a construction project going, you can get a camping permit. That's what that one is. That one's specifically referenced in the code. So this would be like an overnight camping fee for the park specifically.
And you have to have a special youth permit to be able to camp in the park?
You have to have a special event permit and then they pay per day for the park rental.
Okay, just to make, yeah. So not just somebody coming, like, hey, I'm camping park today, it's ten bucks.
I would assume since we've had these events here for quite some time, you can probably average those costs out per event. Damage done to the restrooms, I've heard about, the garbage, you can break out those hours, you have a pretty good number to work with as far as what that extra fee would be for using that for overnight.
Well, and it depends.
Fifteen hundred, and you have to break out the regular hours that these people work, which they work a lot with very little, I don't know, a small department, but. You've got to be able to break those costs out to what is, what that event is creating extra.
So the, the other caveat to that is, so like the bike, the bike event is a five oh one C three, so they pay only half of all of these fees, according to the way it's in the code right now.
No, I think that's fine, that's a perk, but I don't think overnight camping free is a perk, I mean, I don't care who we are, it's still impacting, costs us money. And we, if you bend to the budget being prior to this meeting, you'd see we haven't got any money.
Well, irregardless, it puts wear and tear on our facilities, or you, yeah, what we put in there.
So, did you want, you guys had talked previously about breaking it up, like overnight camping, one to a hundred.
Is, is it possible we could?
I would say just make it a flat fee, and if your event includes.
I think so too.
I, I think it has to be.
If you're going to have people sleep in the park in anything, if you don't shut your event down and everyone leaves at night, because we're not supposed to be in the park at night, it's closed.
True.
Then you pay fifty dollars, seventy-five, a hundred dollars a night, I don't.
Depending on, I think, how many are attending to stay at your, at the park.
They might not know that when they do their permit though.
The bike event looked like a few people the first night, and then the Saturday night is a whole different event. Whole different event.
Yeah.
And.
The only thing I would add is, you can't do a per number thing very easily. It's got to be a flat fee, and it needs to be known upfront, the budget they're in, for their perspective. And you're not trying to count it or try and calculate.
No, no, no.
Somebody after the event's over is an extra.
So it would have to be, it would have to be like a flat fee for this range, and then another flat fee for the upper range, you know, you might have two or something.
I think it's still too hard to know.
Could be, yeah, I don't know.
Or to enforce either, I mean, wouldn't everyone just say, oh, we're just going to have.
Well, they would pay this upfront, so they would have to, they would have to pay it, yeah, when they go.
But when they apply, if they're applying in March, they might not know in July.
Well, they give us an estimate of how many people will attend, but that doesn't mean they necessarily know how many, some of them know how many people are going to stay overnight.
Well, and it doesn't, the number of people, I mean, it, it affects the wear and tear, but, I mean. You know, you still have to send people out to clean the bathrooms and empty trash, and that's just takes a certain amount of hours regardless of ten people that be emptying the trash, I guess, theoretically, but. I don't know that we can really nail it down that well, as opposed to what you're saying in terms of.
So if we did a general fee, would that just cover general, I mean, we have to, we have to designate the money to certain aspects, right, whether it's water, sewer, whatever, right, so we can allocate for it, that we're not grabbing money. But what happens for damage at that point? Let's say, I mean, we know sprinkler heads get damaged in multiple events. Do they get charged back charge for sprinkler? Do they, they do get charged for that?
We send invoices.
So this shouldn't have anything to do with this. This should just be a flat camping fee, overnight fee, and then anything beyond repair of damage gets paid also on top of that fee, is how.
Right.
Does that make sense? I mean, I could see two hundred, I mean, the bike event, the people they have, I could say two hundred and fifty bucks, they got half the event for half the price, I could see two hundred bucks. I think a hundred bucks is not worth.
Because you're already paying two hundred dollars per, well, I guess they're not, they're paying half.
Two hundred dollars in a day, and the nighttime hours are, you know, like what, a third of the day? Half, I mean, if you really want to try to break it down that way.
I'm just trying to get a base to start with some numbers, so.
Two fifty, going once, going twice.
Five hundred.
See, and I'm.
Sure, I'm just throwing it up there and starting.
I meant more like a hundred, a hundred and fifty per day, just to see how it goes.
Per night.
Per night.
Or, sorry, yeah, per night. Just to see like, like, how does it go? How much time are we actually putting into it? And we don't want these people to say, no, we don't want these events to be here. We want these people to have awesome events like we have.
Camping fee's not going to be, they're already saying no, they don't want, the, the, the daily charges, they're already.
Oh, complain it off, yeah, the two hundred dollars a day, e.
But we've been free for an event, I mean, we've been cheap, giving it away for years, that's why the bulk of it, because we've been.
It's a change, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. I don't like paying for things either.
I do every year when I rent the park, you know?
So it's a hundred and fifty?
I think a hundred and fifty a night, we start with that, we see kind of feedback, we can always go for a little.
We go lower, we go higher.
We can change it anytime you want.
Yeah, that's true, that sounds fair.
Right.
You got that, uh.
It's in there.
Amendment.
It is in there.
We, it's on a.
I would suggest a hundred, but.
I'm, and I'm totally, I, I'm, I was like, that's why I wanted to ask you, because I, this had a fee, like, I'm fine with a hundred too, because like, that's, you're still helping the cause of these events.
One twenty-five.
But we're recovering.
One twenty-five.
Well, there's no other numbers like that, it just doesn't match the structure.
You're being too Ross.
Okay. Clarification on the motion? So, keep in mind, this is in the park-related piece, so it will be seventy-five dollars for a five oh one C three.
If it were.
I'm just throwing that out there. It will be half, it'll still be half price, just like everything else for the five one C three, because it's under the same.
But not every event, I mean, and if these events leave, someone will invent a new event to come that will pay for it.
I think most.
A lot of them are.
Trailer rally, I think one fifty.
One fifty, you get that in half less.
That's true, that's a good.
You can stay in a RV for seventy-five nights, you know?
Thank you.
So the motion is the, we got the kids under eighteen and a hundred, over eighteen, two hundred, we've got the sewer hookup of fifty-nine thirty-eight, and we've got a hundred and fifty dollar camping fee.
Oh, could you just say like overnight?
I just put overnight camping.
I like to agree with all the amendments that Mayor House just stated.
All in favor of these changes on this, say aye.
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 Clarification was Councilmember Cook.
Thank you, everyone. This is very important for St. Pass.
Mayor House?
Yes.
We have one, um, public comment, citizens' comment.
Hi, um, my name is Lily Caffedus, and I would have, I came here at ten to seven, but the website says the meeting's at six seven, and I can slowly like start at six. So I would suggest that we change it. So, uh, I would, I have to take the, the, but my topic is affordable housing, and I understand that this is how, so I'm not going to do this sort of, but I want to just. Ask a few questions and then make a few comments, and I would go there, because I don't know if it's the necessary form to get involved. But my first question is, is there anything in the comprehensive plan that addresses affordable? And I'm not talking about section eight, low-income housing. Um, is there anything in the comprehensive plan, such as space on the, on affordable housing or the developments that are coming up, or? Do we talk to developers if they want to be out there?
Yeah, so it's a requirement of GMA for there to be a section on there in affordable housing, and you can, you can look at the draft section, it's just the minimum to meet the, the requirement. So there's not, the, the city hasn't, doesn't have anything in there that would go above and beyond like incentive programs or anything like that. Um, but they have met the requirement for GMA under the comprehensive plan, so it's, it's in there.
Roseland.
But it's, yeah.
And what is the requirement?
So you have to address, you have to basically address affordable housing, so you have to, they, they do it through a, um, if you looked in there on the draft, it's probably a little easier to, to see. But, um, you basically have to do a land analysis and basically show that we've got enough land to, in the future, potentially provide some sort of incentive program for affordable housing. Or, um, do, you know, that we've got enough developable land that we could in, institute some program for affordable housing in the future. So it's a pretty minimal requirement as far as affordable housing goes.
Right, okay. So I just wanted to touch, I just wanted to mention, um, what had worked for a community that I used to live in. And I'll make it short, but people are, when I talk to people about it, they get confused with low-income and affordable housing. They think it's section eight, they think it's apartments and yada, yada. So I don't know if you ever heard of the Mountain World decision? Okay, well, it's a decision that came, that was decided and it's basically set a precedent for many states across the US for affordable housing. And so what it basically is, is a developer comes in, um, based on how many homes that they're going to build, could be ten, it could be twenty, probably the minimum would be ten, could be twenty. And then a percentage, it's usually ten to twenty percent, depending on the size of the development. A percentage of those homes would be designated as affordable housing, homes, not apartments, they could be condos. And so what happens is that home, let's take one, one home designated as affordable housing, and it always stays like that throughout that development for at least thirty years. So a person comes in, and there's a chart, and there's a tier, because one would fall under maybe low-income housing. The next tier would maybe fall under seventy, makes like seventy thousand dollars as a max. Um, and of course, depends, yeah, you know, whatever. Um, that would be a second tier for affordable housing, house that you can purchase, and you can purchase it. Now, an example is, I know, I know for a fact, there's a condominium, it's not here in Roseland, but there's a condominium that's labeled in this development as affordable housing. It's up for sale. The market value is two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. It's a two-bedroom. The affordable housing price that someone would be, could be eligible to purchase is ninety-eight thousand dollars. But what happens is, it always, they can't sell it for market. It always stays affordable. So when they feel, say it's a young couple that graduated college and their starting rate as a combination income would be seventy, seventy-five thousand dollars. For three hundred, four hundred thousand dollar home. It would give them a chance, maybe they would fall in this tier that they could purchase a home in this development that maybe the homes are going for three hundred or four hundred thousand dollars. Then when it gets to the point, five years down the road, they're making now a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's off by deed, this deed always transfers affordable housing. They could then sell it and maybe make five or six thousand dollars, they can't make, there's, there's, you know, there's a certain percent, it's not what you wanna know. But it gave them the opportunity for homeownership. It gave our community for people to be able to stay in the area because I'm finding, I'm hearing a lot about people are being outpriced because they can't afford any of the new homes that are coming in and there's nothing available here now. They transfer the house, this young couple, right, they're making a hundred, they now go afford something. And then some, then it would be available, it's, it's on, you know, it's in our community, it's always available for at least thirty years. So I just wanted to propose that, maybe you're not the right forum, but when I hear about development in Upper Kittensess County, I cringe, I seriously cringe at the prices which are okay for, you know, people who can afford them. But not everybody can afford these houses and I feel bad for the people in our communities, I only love them, that they're not necessarily fit in low income housing. But they're, they're outpriced, they just can't even think about starting out and staying close to their families. So I just asked that the council, and if you think I should go before the planning board, I'm, I'm serious, I even have a meeting with the county. And I'm gonna go through different communities in our area and just sincerely ask that, when did the developers come for planning? That we need a more serious, we need a serious plan in place, and there's no reason why they can't designate a portion of their development to affordable housing. So, thank you for listening, I hope it gets, I know you have a lot of other priorities of where and so forth and so forth. But to me, this is really a priority also. So, um.
I think, can you read your, your name?
My name's Lynn Capades, and I actually live in Roald.
Okay.
Um, I spoke to commissioner, she, she, um, put me in touch with because Roald, um, unincorporated.
Yeah, right. No, I just wanted to know, that's all.
Yeah, I'm new to the area actually, um, and this same, and a reason I moved here is because this community is very much like the community that I came from, and I saw the grip, the, the same thing happened and, I mean, I already lived there, but they got outpriced, and then if you meet, if you wanna jot this down, it's called the Mount Laurel decision. And what happened in Mount Laurel was a, a beautiful town in New Jersey, that's where I'm from. Um, it's a beautiful town in New Jersey and the people got outpriced. And the developers and people in the community had said, go live in Kitten. Go live in Trenton. Go live, I don't know what to tell you, but, you know, our, our community is growing and these, and, and, and I wanna compliment these art communities because they're just, everybody wants to live here, why? Because we're a caring, loving community. And we'd like to, I'd like to keep it that way in the sense that we care about, you know, people that can afford to live here too, that doesn't, that doesn't mean that they're poor, it means that they just, we need affordable housing, it's really, it's really important, and there's no reason why the developers that are coming in cannot, we cannot get a plan together to, it, we can put a plan together and require that so much, so, a certain amount of percentage. If it's two hundred homes, it's twenty, it's twenty houses be set aside, and there, and which takes me to the next step, that then we don't have to worry about, the county will still have those grants, but we're not providing enough affordable housing for the growth of the community. It's a very slow process, so this would help us by requiring developers to put in a portion, and even if we started at five percent, I mean, that, that's something that needs to be discussed.
Totally agree with you, and that's definitely a county subject, I don't know whether we could get a development, twenty houses.
Well, and I don't mean right now, I mean, ten years ago.
There are provisions that are, but I mean, if we can't do twenty now, we're not gonna be able to do twenty in the future either. We do have a plat moratorium there, so they couldn't do anything without us saying that it's a no, so.
Right.
Totally agree with what you're saying.
Right.
But it's more a bigger city, and that's like Clayellum, you know, Ellensburg.
Oh, because I'm hearing, and, and I'm hearing, and I don't.
Well, now, what you're saying is right, I agree, the citizens of Roseland, I feel like they have to move out, but we're developing one house at a time.
Yeah. Oh, okay.
So just because a landlord wants to build a lower.
Right, we can't do, right.
Doesn't mean we can say buy another land, build a lower income.
No. Right, yeah, no.
Facebook's the killer here, I, I listened to that exact conversation, I, I saw your conversation online.
Oh, okay.
On Facebook, I, I, about the, about the Clary, about the Mont Clary, is that what you said?
It's called the Mount Laurel decision.
Mount Laurel, yeah, I, I heard your comments on that, I read those.
Yeah.
Careful on Facebook.
Probably unit total.
It's, it's, um, it, 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 it's always worse sometimes than what it is, but it was a, I listened, I read that whole Facebook conversation.
Well, yeah, on Roseland talk, but, I mean, I don't see any, I don't think I said anything bad.
No, I think, no, I think you had really good points.
But when I spoke, when I have been speaking, only, I'm only familiar with it because it happened in, in New Jersey.
Yeah.
And I'm not, and, and then across, it set a precedence for other communities. Because when I mentioned it to a few people, just, just because it's something that I strongly believe.
Oh, it's a great idea.
Um, and maybe, and you're right, maybe it doesn't pertain to us, but just in general, I just wanted to mention that, um, people are confusing it with low income housing.
Exactly.
And, and it, and that's not.
It's not the same.
We already have low income housing, I don't know if we have enough, but we already have that. Now we need affordable, I think it's a great idea and people didn't even know about it.
You should take your, if you take your passion to the county and continue with the commission, that would be great, and keep us informed, because we'd love to.
Yeah.
If we can assist you in a way, I'm sure that everybody here agrees with that.
Well, I appreciate that.
But I think the county's the head to really start, I think is sort of what Brett's saying, and us as a city would love, would support that. We just don't really have that type of wealth within our city limits that we control.
Okay.
And that would really impact us, but as overall support, that is something we've always talked about, but that's a great idea.
Yeah, and that Facebook, I just wanted to put it out there, I will have conversations.
Oh, no, you were really clear about what you're saying, you were very clear and very easy to understand.
I'm not into debating anything, but I strongly feel that this is a good plan.
Yep.
Because then I, they mentioned something, there was a development plan over twenty years with two hundred.
Yeah, that was our comp plan estimating the quantity of houses that were on the comp plan for the city of Roseland.
Okay.
Um, the typical probably that, somebody that has never been to a meeting here in the city council, maybe they've watched it, but, um, not a lot of input we've had, I mean, people who showed up for our comp plan have been religious about showing up and giving us their input. I can't say any of those have shown up on our comp plan meetings.
Well, I'm happy to hear that, you know, you guys are, you know, would support it.
Absolutely.
Then maybe as you said, Roseland isn't the place because right now we don't have that kind of development.
No, it is, it is, I think we could, right back here, we could develop all this land that Suncadia owns and that potential, that's where Roseland would have to and could do it, so it's, it's not like a, it's a dream, yeah, but it's not a lost dream. We, we totally feel your, your pain on this and everybody feels it too because we all are involved in it, so it's, yeah, it's, it's a, it's a possibility here, but, uh, it's not a dead thing, especially Roseland.
Yeah, it's more like get the developer to pay for it.
Well, it's just getting, it's getting the county, that's getting the city, it's getting everybody on board, what we need, what, where it's gonna go, and yeah, we, Clayellum needs it, Roseland needs it, Ellensburg needs it.
Yeah.
It's, it's a, it's a definite, so.
Yeah, yeah, I hear that.
But yeah, keep voicing your opinion, keep going to county, and just, yeah, that's what we, that's what we really need is people out there saying this is actually a big problem and we need to have a solution for it.
Well, I think it's a great solution.
Well.
I think we need to move on here, so.
Ma'am.
Yeah, that's okay.
Yeah, don't give up your passion, you can continue with that.
I will, I will, I will, I worked two jobs to get my first house, so I won't do that, yeah.
Bug those commissioners, bug those commissioners.
No, they, they already offered me, get on board with them, I'm like, no, I just wanna let you know my ideas, so.
That's good.
But thank you for listening, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for your contact information.
Uh, special thanks to the home source.
This is, um, directions, I'm going to go to our comprehensive.
Mm-hmm.
And it shows what we have.
Home source would like to put a bus stop, basically sign.
I'm going to different municipalities in our district, because, and I'm sure, just. And then I have a.
That's all set the DOT has to.
Because. The county has to make statements.
Yeah.
Oh.
Sounds great.
Are they gonna still put a stop here?
Yes.
We just don't have a sign, is that why?
No, we're going to, we're, we're going to, so, we're trying to coordinate, I'm still waiting for Lucy to get back to me because we're trying to coordinate so all the signs look the same for Upper County. That may or may not happen. Right, that may or may not happen, but, um, that's kind of, I, I see the reason for wanting them to all be the same. So, we can agree upon a design, then we'll make that happen, if we can't, then, then they'll look different, and that's just where we.
Move the residential permit up.
So, so.
First, who was the second?
Leah.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor of this?
Thank you very much, you have a nice evening.
Thanks, you too.
All right, there you go.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I got two real quick things, uh, I got an email from Amy McGuffin, the Kittensess County Chamber CEO, she was planning on coming. She's trying to come to our meetings regularly to update us, she said she didn't have an update today, I'm just asking that along. And I think she was planning to come up to the next meeting, but it would, I just think that'll let citizens' comment make an update. And then, uh, I'm gonna pretend via phone the Kittensess County Conservation District meeting on Thursday. And I'm just gonna ask about water-related projects. And we have a lot going on and what might fit in, cause that was one thing that she came up when they first presented to us last year that was, I think, attractive for joining. So, try to find out a little bit more of that.
Is that the group that's gonna do some fire rising on the alleys as well, conservation and Kittensess Conservation?
What about that and KFAK?
And KFAK, yeah.
With, you know, but it's Dan Arndt.
I don't know where, the funding comes through KFAK somehow, but I'm not really sure. I'd have to ask Roseland. It's through DNR and KFAK, so, yeah, I'm not sure how the funding exactly.
Yeah, there's a lot, there's a lot of crossover.
There was some Scotch broom starting to spring back up.
Yeah, I noticed that too. They are pretty bad.
Noxious ways of doing it.
They have, yeah, cool, cause I was worrying about that as well.
That's all I got.
Yeah, we, we met with Dean, I didn't get his last name.
Have he kept his last name?
He's the engineer who's working on the, uh, this sewer plan, the senior one, has been proposing for the last meeting. And he came, we had a, a, a spirited discussion, we shared our side, we, we shared his side, but and, so, they're asking us to, to analyze this proposal and make a recommendation, so. I don't think we're gonna be ready to do that on June twenty-fourth, which is when that's leading the schedule, so we are recommending that we ask the sewer committee to delay that. And then we should schedule where the dedicated topic is, what are we gonna, how are we gonna respond to this proposal from the basically, the basic benefits of it is they wanna change from a number of connections, P schedule to a total flow. Now, um, the reasons, if I, if I.
I'm, I'm, I'm just listening here.
The, the, the advantages that he lays out, why would one do this? One would be, uh, it'd be an easier agreement to implement and to audit, that would be. Uh, another one would be that, uh, we are unlikely to use our full capacity. And so that we could, we could then lease ourselves or our capacity to be able to do this.
Can't lease it. What are you gonna, you'll pull it back out?
We, we discussed that. They insist that we can effectively, I, I think it sounds like a terrible idea.
That was our reaction.
We have excited, we say the two, it just might be like, hey, yeah, you could have a, get to what you're coming.
We're gonna give you five years to build that building and then we're gonna pull your investment back.
Yeah, could we really do that? I'm not sure as a group that we could do that. But anyway, the, the point is that, that he insists that leasing is a, is a real thing and that we could actually do it. And, or that we could sell it, uh, easier to implement and, and I, um, and then, and then somehow, for some reason, it's not completely clear, the, the thirty-nine hundred dollar hookup fee goes away.
The shortfall.
The shortfall fee goes away, and, um.
Suncadia's on board with that?
Yes, yes, which is also confusing.
It's a long, there's a lot more to the detail, we need to have a really good meeting about, most of our, we'd like all kinds.
So, so, so these are the, these are the advantages, the disadvantages from my point of view are, um, we're opening an agreement and we're bargaining from a, a, a hugely diminished, uh, budget. Uh, cause they all want it and we don't, so, you know, okay, there you go. And, and, and then, and then secondly, um, you know, this agreement was, is, is not a perfect agreement, this agreement is complicated for a reason. And it does, it does, this agreement does recognize the historic legacy of this community and that we do have an ironite problem, and that's why the agreement reads the way it does. Um, so he's making the point of, well, this encourages us to improve our ironite problem, we've already spent a boatload of money on this, we've captured most, almost all of the easy ones, what's left are these, these pump.
And we're still cutting percentage every year on our ironite, so.
Yes, but, 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 but Joe was making a point that the low hanging fruit has all been gathered on that, so everything else, everything else that would reduce ironite would be the difficult, complicated, expensive part. So, you know, overall, in my point of view, you know, frankly, from my point of view, uh, too much danger and not enough benefit to even have this conversation, but that's just my personal point.
And the stepping of this conversation is virtually because one entity has overdone their ER, their ER backups, okay?
Yes.
And, and that, and that was admitted today.
Right, and to be fair, they have, you know, from the very first day that this agreement was signed, they had been wanting to talk about changing to a flow-based model. And every, every other conversation I've ever had has all been led by Suncadia, Suncadia sat quiet, sitting, saying a freaking word, which is confusing to me.
Well, what, what came about was the twenty-one point one percent that we are allocated for, which is really the percentage of flowing, not necessarily the hookups, or you could sort of relative it to hookups, but that is really the percentage of flow that we're allowed into the sewer system. The year they showed us, they didn't give us the average year, he only had one with him, and we're about eleven point two five percent of that usage. So they go, we got ten percent flow, and that's where they're like, we just have way more than you're ever going to use, so, just, the whole idea is to reallocate that to lessen that. But when I brought up the fact that, you know, we're doing our comp plan, we have another two hundred and twenty homes that's expected within this time, quick math ratio, we're right up to eighteen percent is what I ballparked, just sitting there, I just, to, to, you know. And of course, he pulls out his calculator, well, maybe it's not quite that much, well, it's close enough for a ballpark, which doesn't leave us any buffer, then it leaves us three or four percent, which I'm not sure that's much buffer.
With the flow pump, with, with the overflow pump.
Plus a twenty percent.
Then we could talk about flow rate.
Well, then what happens is, what happens is, this, just resolving the thirty-nine hundred dollars that would go back in the shortfall, that still gets made up elsewhere, all that does is say that Suncadia, what's happened is Suncadia's realized they probably will never end that thirty-nine hundred dollar payoff from everything, their shortfall's not coming quick enough, is sort of what it came out to in our conversation today.
I'm not sure what.
It was very odd for them to throw that, but what happens is, is our, our, our fees would increase twenty percent with the new, you already have complaints about water and sewer. Um, but that would increase another twenty percent automatically with the new contract.
Oh, let's get that information, this conversation's over.
Yeah.
And, and so, and so, we're asking for some back information.
That's a huge kicker.
We're still asking for more back information, Clayellum, if you've never received in the past three months, and, and a lot of this stems from that source. But we, we can't verify anything because we've never been sent the documentation that's required every year. But we've never received it from Clayellum on where their ERE hookups are, and, um, that's, that's the frustrating factor is you always show us their cards. And so there's a trust factor.
I don't trust their measurement.
Uh, uh, well, and that's, that's what's happened, I could read from the past in the history of Joe, and Mitch has been in public works, and, um, we've been just. Uh, well, and that's, that's what's happened, I could read from the past and the history of Joe and to be, to Mitch has been in public works and, um, we've been just innocently upfront with everything. I mean, we, we've hit nothing, when I started looking, everything, Joe really just put it out on paper and he had nothing to hide, he was honest. Um, we might have been the only honest ones. And so I think there's.
I hate to say this on the camera, but I think all, the only measurements they're getting is from us and South Clallum and then they're just backing the rest of it up and then just dividing it up between Suncadia and this.
So, so we need, we need to, we wanna reschedule, we think a week and a half right now is the twenty fourth. I don't feel that we should be pressed to have this meeting, and they want a decision the twenty fourth. I don't even think we try to meet, I think we need to take a few more weeks, we need to get us together, I think we should, this is a, this is an all council decision, I think we need to talk about it amongst ourselves, bring our notes.
Totally understand it.
Yeah, if they want a decision, then just hit it, you know. There, there's, there's two more things.
At this point, we can go.
Yeah.
There's two more things though, we have a large water service area. Maybe someday sewer would be reporting, I think our service, I'm talking about the number three portion, treat us in Clallum, for example. So that's another reason for not a whole lot to that, to that capacity. And then secondly, you know, frankly, honestly, the argument that you've been mean to us in the past, you don't treat us fairly, we don't trust you, isn't the right answer for this discussion. We need something more than that. And that's, that's really all we've been offering.
Data, yeah, we need data.
And that's really vast and we've sent letters and we're gonna try one more letter, I think Mike's gonna send one more and that's it. Um, but we'd like to postpone the meeting, he had said that he'd be happy to postpone the meeting, we just need to let him know when we want that meeting. Preferably, we extend it two or three weeks down the road, so July-ish is what I'm thinking.
And then maybe it makes sense to bring Dean back and have a discussion here.
I think it should be in our, in our territory.
Yeah, good idea.
I agree.
That's clever.
So I think, I mean, we, we need to pick the meeting date, I assume after the Fourth of July.
You have to dedicate it.
Yeah. So we'll have to decide when that meeting needs to be, but we need to cancel the twenty fourth, that we're not ready to make a decision. And I would say mid-July, but that, cause we're gonna have, obviously we have the Fourth, we've got activities that we're all, we all do, right? That war council, not, not project cities, just in general.
Find out when the engineer can be here.
Okay, then we'll go back from that date and say someone in July.
And then, and then finally, we had, we had, yes, thank you, that, you're exactly where I'm going. And finally, we put off vision work here, we wanted, you know, set a date for our, our, our budget retreat, you know, assess where we are for the year. We proposed July twenty seventh, the seventh, can you do it?
Yes.
Isn't that the weirdest part?
I'm, I'm, I'm back from two weeks of vacation. In the morning?
Okay, okay.
Yeah, like ten to.
Nine?
Yeah, we just, yeah, nine would be.
Do it at nine o'clock?
Yeah.
Yeah, nine to.
I, I would rather do it earlier, ten o'clock really sucks.
Nine to one at least, nine to one at least, yeah, yeah, one at least, yeah.
Nine to nine thirty.
Can you do it?
I don't know, I have to ask councilman.
What time?
You'll need it off too there.
Well, we'll work it, we'll call it ten.
It's very tough for fourth of October. We'll try, let me though.
Okay. Then nine o'clock, July twenty seventh for a budget retreat Saturday, right here at the city council.
I have a couple of things, uh, I just wanted to get a, or to see or request if we have a total tally of money spent or money received from the logging project. And then also, is there anything left in the logging, or last year's logging project that we still have to get done?
Um, so we have, I, I'd have to get the number from Sarah, I don't know how much is exactly left in there.
I have it here.
Do you have it?
Five thousand five hundred bucks.
Okay.
Did we all get that?
That's, yes, well, I don't know.
Budget financed.
No, is it the admin?
This is the budget, this is the.
That, that's the.
So what I don't know is I don't know out of that money, so, um, Partit went up and did another walkthrough, so we have to pay for that. Sarah said the invoice came, so that may have already come out of that number, I'm not sure on that. We have weed control that's happening, it's going to happen.
Right.
Uh, I, I mean, that money is spent, I guess, is what I'm getting at, I mean, the long and the short of that is that money.
So we not have three hundred and fifty dollars in that for the, for the fire permit?
Uh, I don't know, I'm gonna have to check with Sarah, I, I don't, I'm not positive, I mean, we, we can, yeah.
Well, they might be only a hundred, you know.
So I haven't looked at that, is it, is it literally wash, is it, are we in the red or sorry?
We will, we're, we're gonna be in the red.
Okay, but not like detrimental with that, or is it?
No, because from here out, it's, we can, so when we get that report back from the engineer, then that's all the mitigation projects. So then that's kind of a planning process, so those are, I don't wanna say controllable, but, you know, we can plan for those a little bit better rather than, so, we shouldn't be. Too much in the hole, but we haven't performed any of the rehab at all, so, for the most part, so.
And we do, and we do want to for water quality, it's kind of like control.
And the big burn piles also, right, that's, that's another thing we haven't, can we?
Yeah, we have not, no.
That, the big, big burn pile at that?
We're hoping that, uh, that the training.
Well, that would be for the general fire wise, you're talking about section A.
Well, it sounded like Chris was saying that would be a separate process.
Wasn't there a possible grant? Wasn't there a possible grant to DNR?
And it would happen at a different time.
For.
They would, they would work on the grants for us, correct, Chris was gonna do that for us?
From DNR, you know, for us.
Yep.
And we might have talked about this last meeting, uh, water on South, is it South Street or South Ave Street? Uh, Ms. Bronkors came in and, uh, and then she also sent an email on our email saying that she's having water issues.
Did you have to mark it?
I'm sorry.
South House, South House, water.
Or water pressure?
Yeah, the water pressure.
So last I've talked to Mike was when we did the, we did her house pressure, we were eighty five pounds. And as soon as the sprinklers kicked on at the school, season started a little pressure. And so at this point, he's got GNO looking at, um, starting to look at that system, there was some, um. That strip of road that that line comes down that feeds the four or five houses there is, um, he, Mike at this point claims it, um, it was never deeded to the city because it never met our requirements. And so there's some legality issues, whether we actually can go in there and touch that line or if that's actually those four homeowners or those five homeowners issues. So GNO is looking, is doing some engineering on the, the parts by Hawthorne Street where they looked at the pressure valve last year that failed. And so, and start working away, but he was looking with, GNO was gonna do some engineering on that. But we were waiting for, Mike was waiting for some legal issues and direction and what we could actually do down that way.
Yeah, if there's ever bonded or if there's a, a year bond.
I think it had to do with, pardon?
If there was like a year bond, like, would, like, there was never a transfer, it'd be nice to see if there's ever a transfer to the city of like years, X amount of years or like some kind of paper trail.
He didn't have an answer, but I'll, apparently from what I hear, I think Amy might have been, but I think it had to do with the fire lane size of the road and so forth, it didn't meet the standards, so the city couldn't adopt it.
If the road wasn't the standard, so the city didn't adopt it, and so it was all, that's all private.
Yep.
And if that's all private, then the infrastructure in there is private and.
Yeah, and so, and so that's what that's, but.
There's some more information on that, Jeff, we, we need to look a little bit because I've seen something that did say the city accepted the water main extension.
Yeah, so that, I'm just getting the feedback from public works director.
And then abandoned, abandoned the alley afterward, so.
But at this point, um, it was definitely direct, it directly is affected when the school sprinklers start to run. Not that, I mean, not blaming the school, obviously, um, but that's the cause, that's, there's a cause and there's the effect that's coming from that.
And it's gonna happen, yeah.
And, and it was seasonal, so it was great, we did all our testing prior to that.
Yeah.
And Mike did it, and I thought, you know, we got it, he took care of it, then a couple of weeks I reported that, we talked about it at the admin meeting, pressure was, it had actually too much pressure at one point, which is the main, I ended up firing it, it was ninety five. That as soon as the water season, watering season started, we got the phone call. Yep, it started, they must be sprinkling, and sure enough, they were. And, um, we talked about can we adjust the hours, um, I'm not sure where that stands, but that's something, it sounds like they've already tried to do a little bit at the school with their watering hours. Um, but there's obviously, there's something else going on within there that we need to look at.
Yeah.
And legality wise, that's where I was told, well, that, our public works meeting got, today got disrupted for a budget admin meeting I needed to get to. Uh, and we're gonna continue that tomorrow, so, um, that's on my list. Um, where that's at, so, um, that's something before maybe I meet with Mike, I can, with Michelle, and we can look at some things before I meet with Mike tomorrow. I'll be happy to give you an update as soon as I, I can have it in the public works meeting.
And I got one more, and this is like the, never the fun one, but I think I've been saying it since two thousand thirteen. But increase of everything that's happening and, uh, city, our city is just going crazy and we're in our crazy season. But I would love to see our office open Friday. Half day.
It's not happening.
But they work, they're, well, they're working four tens, so you split that time out, so you don't always have three people in the office, you got two people in the office, we structure it differently, and we go to Fridays.
Has to be relevant in each work, if you don't think that.
It has to be.
I'm not opposed to that.
Yeah, that's, that's regardless.
That's the main, that's the main concern that I have about it.
But we're on a no overtime budget right now, we're, we need to try to get commissions to be closer to closing time at the office, no more seven o'clock meetings, right over five o'clock.
Oh, yeah, totally, yeah.
And we're all over.
Um, we, we.
Yeah, we burned it that way.
I agree.
But yeah. I think it should be.
So I will say this, Nolan, just real quick on that Friday issue, so here is the huge challenge in this office and maybe that's something that could be revisited and even work, even with the staff rotation. When we have a building where there's not constant disruption, so if Brandy answers the phone and I'm sitting over here, it's a constant disruption because this, we're on top of each other in here.
Totally, yeah.
So Friday is the one day when, like, I can't, there's not even a place to have a meeting, so like, if somebody comes in and wants to have a meeting, we're either hiding in this corner or we're sitting at this table with people walking by. It's really, it's really, I cannot even stress how hard it is to just conduct normal everyday business in this environment, so.
And Friday would be the worst, cause everybody would wait.
Well, Friday gives us a, a day where you can, if you've got something, yeah, if you've got something where you gotta have a meeting or something and, you know, schedule it on Friday and then change around the, the week's schedule. Whereas it's, yeah, it's, it's crazy in here sometimes, like, crazy, crazy.
And again, I'm not trying to throw the thorn in, inside, it just, it just doesn't make sense to me that we're not open on Fridays, so. Just for a city's, uh, the city's benefit for the city. And nothing against you guys, you guys are doing awesome work and I'm not trying to add anything else on your plate. But like you said, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
All in favor?
All in.
Comment before you enter?
Yes.
Um, my plan is to start the trail on Friday, so you know, something just came up yesterday where, um, there's a, a group meant to be able to come in on Saturday and provide some labor.
Cool.
That's great.
Thank you for your time. Yeah, thanks for moving on.
Thank you.
Don't start a fire.
No meat burners, please.
That's like control.
No, the rolling machines, the reefer, the chainsaws, and that's only on Friday and then it's all handled.
Good plan.
And I got all the release forms from Brandy, so it was, it was working on it this summer.
Great.
We're done.
Uh, I'll, oh, wait, I just.
Does the TNC have to be, like, together as a team, or?
So what you guys agree?